Google, Google makes me all powerful.
I just think we've been here too long. That's what we get with the information.
I have the sum total of Earth's knowledge right here and I can find mosquitoes that way. Just let me know when you're done.
All right, Sherry's going to walk you through some of our thoughts about the mosquito management plan for 2013. We thought this might be better discussed now, rather than in September when someone comes to you and says, hey, you want to spray tomorrow? Or when some citizen says, hey, I got a mosquito, are you going to spray? Or what are you going to do? I don't know that we have any examples of anyone else that's really doing this, although I'm sure other cities are in some form or fashion.
You mean in this area?
Yeah, in this area. But we thought we'd kind of walk you through it so at least you knew what we were planning to do. And if you had something else that you wanted to do, you could let us know, even now, rather than let us know in July when the mosquito's out of the bag. So, um...
That's weird.
I noticed that he didn't laugh. So Sherry, you can join me to get started.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. I will tell you that it is a very popular topic. This week along, I attended a conference that our CDC, Center for Disease Control was there, the state. We had approximately 150 in attendance because it's going to be a very big subject again this year. I don't have to tell you, this season that we experienced was nothing like we've experienced in all the years. 2002, when it really became a real issue with West Nile in our area. Years when we had had a total of two cases up until last year where we had 34 to 35 cases just inside the city of Lewisville this year. So it's not like anything we've seen before. What I'm going to attempt to discuss with you today is to talk about some of the facts about mosquitoes and particularly the areas that we're dealing with here inside the city of Lewisville. What a mosquito plan basically looks like, how it works, and particularly how it works here inside the city of Lewisville. There are some of our members, some of our citizens who are not aware that we actually have a plan in place and have had that plan in place since 2002. And then what does that plan for 2013 look like? And what's the county's role? How involved are they with here in the city of Lewisville? And then there were some questions again about mosquito districts, particularly in Texas, and how they work. For your information, a little bit about facts, there's approximately 50 types of mosquitoes here within the Dallas-Fort Worth area. About 99% of our West Nile virus cases were actually by one mosquito, a one family, Culex quicus laciatus. And that's a tough one for you. So you'll be hearing me saying "quink" or "the house mosquito" from here on out. This particular mosquito has been one that's associated, as I said, with West Nile virus. It is the female that is the carrier of the virus. She is looking for a blood meal in order to complete her egg cycle, so that her main function is to reproduce. And she is the carrier of the virus. They typically look like this, like I said, a brown house mosquito. Like I said, 99% of the cases, they lay anywhere from 100 to 300 eggs, you know, like I said, at night in different stages. So this one mosquito's life cycle is about a month. And she typically, what you see there on the eggs, this particular one is called a raft, and she will produce in her lifetime at least five rafts, which is equivalent to about 1,500 mosquitoes within her cycle, her life cycle. And the question will be from you and from our citizens that will ask us to say, well, what is a mosquito management program? Well, that program basically is a program that's what the state, CDC, and your local government should consist of is an integrated pest control management plan. That is different kinds of tactics and strategies and everything that will help you address the mosquito problem that you're dealing with, if at all. And you'll ask, well, how does it work? I can tell you that a huge part of a mosquito plan, and a very important part of a plan, is you have to be doing surveillance. You have to know your target. You have to know what's out there. And for us and for other cities, what that means is we're trapping. And we have been doing that since 2002. We have traps that are considered light traps and rabbit traps. Your rabbit traps will mimic exactly what your brown house mosquito wants, stinky, smelly water. That doesn't mean that that's the only type of areas they will lay their eggs. They are opportunists, and they certainly will lay and can lay in clean water also. They're looking for areas like ditches. They're looking for cans. They're looking for old tires. And this particular mosquito is very popular around the house. They only have a flight range of about one to two miles, so they're going to stay pretty close. So even your flower pots, your gutters, things or those are huge breeders for mosquitoes. What our guys are doing, they're setting mostly the rabbit traps. They mimic the water of what the mosquito is looking for. We'll set those out nightly. Then collect them very early in the morning. We'll send them on to Texas Department of State Health Services where we can actually have them test to see if we have in that pool of mosquitoes the West Nile virus present in the mosquitoes. Habitat. A lot of our citizens, a lot of our population are unaware that we have a lot of control of, you know, raising and breeding this mosquito. We've got to be very vigilant about making sure that we educate our citizens so that we can get rid of a lot of the areas that typically breed mosquitoes around our house. I can tell you that this season, none like I've ever experienced before, would not have been possible for my staff, which is in Animal Services, to handle this here. It took an entire team effort. Public services worked very vigilant with us. They were walking those strange ditches, areas that are very, very difficult to get to. They were putting the mosquito dumps. They were putting the granulars out there, things that were targeting those mosquitoes before as a stage of when they are larva, before they actually develop into an adult mosquito. Code enforcement was huge. We have swimming pools that are breeding mosquitoes, particularly your green pools, which are associated with a high count of your quigs. Not all mosquitoes or pools breed mosquitoes. About 7% of your pools do, and they're typically your green pools. They feed on the algae. And because of the depth of the pool, people seem to think that because of the depth of the pool that mosquitoes don't breed. That's not necessarily true in this particular case with pool.
Were you talking about pool? Were you talking about swimming pool?
Yes, sir, I am. Abandoned, neglected pool.
Oh, abandoned. When you're saying the green pool.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Staffs also sponsored this time for the first time, three days of mosquito dumps giveaway programs to our citizens. Total count of that was about 2,000. We had several, at least three days, I believe it was, at the central fire station where we actually presented those to any of our citizens who wanted to come in and pick those up with information on how to apply that product. The other, we actually with code, public services, and some others teamed up and delivered about 1,600 households, at least two mosquito dumps with instructions on how to apply that. And those were some of the areas where we had some of our largest positive cases.
Sherry, do you still have inventory of that or do you run through it?
We have went through it. What we did is we shared a lot of that with public service. So we have some left in public service. If they haven't used it all, and there'll be a few of it at our animal service. We pretty much went through that.
So you're going to be replenishing that supply?
Yes, sir, we will. Yes, sir, we will. Again, the main focus is it has to be a team effort in order to reduce exposure to the insects that are known to carry the disease. Being vigilant about working with your media is very important. We did a lot of that. We worked with our internal media, with James. We got things on the website. We kept the website updated. Your citizens need to be informed at all times. Never felt that there's something that we're hiding from them because really, it's a team effort if we're going to ever gain control of the situation that we're dealing with. We reviewed, used the reverse 911 system for mass notification, which was a huge saver and factor for us. This season was upon us before we really knew what was happening, and so the 911 reverse system was excellent for us this year. Not to mention just keeping everything posted on our website. And we had calls from our television. We had our newspaper and from the television. And so, you know, we didn't shy away from that. We answered their questions because that was an asset to us to be able to get that information out there. Again, the best way when you're surveillant and you can't, biological controls, we use the VTI. We've had questions about the fish, the gambusi, and that's fine. Again, it's one part of your integrated pest control program. Unfortunately, this time of the year, this time, because it was so much beyond what we had experienced in the past, we did use insecticides this year. And we have not had to do that, I believe, our last time. We've only done one other time, was 2005, in one of the areas where we had at least three positive pools of mosquitoes for the West Nile virus. So it's rare that we've had to use it, but in this particular case, we did use a contractor who came in and treated the city of Lewisville areas where we're having a lot of our problems at these four times. For those who are not aware of what our plan looks like, the city of Lewisville plan is based off the Texas West Nile Virus Public Health Response Plan. That was designed and implemented in 2002 through the recommendations of our Texas Department of State Health Services. Your risk level for arbor virus response one is that you're not getting very many, you're trapping, you're always trapping, but your traps are coming down low. You're not getting any positive cases of mosquitoes for the West Nile virus. You're constantly checking with your sister cities like Flower Mound and some of the other surrounding cities to see what's happening in their city. And so we're not having any of that at all. So that recommendation response again is to continue to do your surveillance, which is to trap those tests. Those mosquitoes are going to be identified through our state agency to make sure that we're not having any of the virus there. Part of our program also is to make sure we're maintaining records where we're trapping. We always have at least five to six fixed locations, and those are throughout the city, so that we can monitor throughout the city to see if there's certain types of mosquitoes coming into our area. And if we're getting more positives or none, if we are beginning to get positives, if we're experiencing more positives in a certain side of the city. Public information is always going to be crucial because, again, without public information and the assistance from the public, we're going to have a real difficult time controlling this mosquito and controlling this virus. The control mechanism, of course, is in place, is know your target. Probably what a lot of our councilmen and some of our citizens don't know is that we are available when our citizens are calling us and saying, you know, I'm not sure about my property. I'm not sure about some of the things that may be attractive for mosquitoes that lay eggs. And so we will go out, and we do go out and spend quite a time at a time with those citizens, surveying their property and pointing out some areas that we feel like could be harbors for the mosquitoes. And then introducing them into some things, recommending some things that might be beneficial. Two, very similar, the risk levels moderate, you know, they make some evidence of disease within some of the surrounding cities. Again, we have to monitor and check all of those areas. Same thing is you're going to be surveillant, doing the surveillance of those areas, making sure that you're sending your, you're collecting any of the mosquitoes, that they're going to stay. You might also know that we need to at least send about 50 of those mosquitoes collected in a trap in order for them to have a true sample in order to determine whether or not we have a positive pool. Always, again, your public information is going to be crucial. And your control mechanism, again, is source reduction. Emphasis, again, making sure that you are identifying areas that become breeding areas and larva site or adult site if necessary. Risk level three, obviously out of one to three, we begin to get a little more riskier. The probability is, the probability is going to be high simply because at this particular time, we're probably discovering that we do have positive mosquitoes within our pool. And at that time, it's up to, you also not only may be seeing a human case, or you may see some in equine horses, which determine the protocol of what you need to do, which is through either spray or increase your education. And the highest level on that, of course, out of our plan is risk level four. Obviously, what we just experienced the last time was a risk level four. We had multiple human outbreaks confirmed, confirmed not just through us, but confirmed through our epidemiologists with Denton County. And at that time, we brought in our sprayers, and ultimately, at the end of the season, we did the aerial spraying.
Sherry, go back. I'm sorry, go ahead and finish this part.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead and finish this part.
The risk level four, again, you're intensifying your surveillance. You're out there more. Basically, what you saw with our public service guys, our code guys, it was that they were, you know, going through the ditches areas, even failed to mention our parks guys were fabulous in assisting us this year. We had guys that were treating our parks, any areas that held standing water, our ditches. Our guys were cleaning, dredging those areas to make sure that the water flowed, which is what we need. Again, like I said, our swimming pool, our guys were taking zero tolerance, shorting the notice fans here so that we could get those cleaned up, even if those belonged to, had turned back over to properties of the banks because what we experienced with some of those were under foreclosure, unfortunately. And again, the spraying, we implemented something we've not done since 2005. And then, of course, we've not ever did any aerial spraying inside the Denton County area that I'm aware of. So we saw things that we typically not received before. Yes, sir.
Now, Council, note that the threshold for spraying occurs at level three. Level two, even though there may be cases of arbor virus indicated, confirmed within city limits or within the 50-mile radius that were diameter that Sherry's talking about, that level doesn't indicate spraying, nothing you could do it. But if we're following the protocol here, we wouldn't necessarily spray just because there was a case or two of West Nile within city limits, or a dozen cases necessarily in a larger 50-mile area where you start looking at spraying as an option is at risk level three. Do you have much more frequency, basically, for the topic?
Yes, sir. What is our 2013 mosquito management plan and how will it work? It will look exactly like you saw. Our plan will remain the same. However, through several meetings with CDC, conversations with Denton County, our director there, our epidemiologist, you know, the one thing that's come out of it this year is that we definitely need to be earlier in our surveillance. Where we have typically began our surveillance May 1st, you will see us begin our setting traps at mid-March. The one thing that, with all the experts that we've had opportunities to learn from, is that, as we said, this particular mosquito is an opportunist. What we're learning is that overwintering has been a big thing under discussion now, is that they're literally going under some of those storm rains and are able to survive. They will reproduce and pass on that virus to the eggs. And so you can have a continuous West Nile mosquito, positive mosquito. Again, the theory from the experts is that this may have been what happened, that we had a very mild winter before, followed up by a very rainy spring, and the overwintering mosquitoes continued to multiply, may have led to what we experienced in 2012. So what we hope to do is be out there, our plan to do is be mid-March. One of the dilemmas we were experiencing was that Texas Department of Health, which is where we send our tests, had stated that they didn't know if they would be prepared to handle all of our tested that soon. They were prepared for May. But what I am understanding as of this week is that they are working very hard to try to accommodate all of the agencies out there. They're going to need their assistance. And again, early education. I'll be working with our media people to get information out because Mr. King is right. The spraying is not the answer. Your CDC, your state, all of your agencies still endorse that we've got to have our citizens more informed, and that we have to have them more involved if we're going to be successful in our program. So education is key factor. Staff will continue our current protocol in place, which we will talk with our leaders about spraying, insecticides. If we have three, at least three positive samples of mosquitoes that are confirmed through state or media agency, or that we have a human case, it could possibly warrant the ground spraying.
That's a little bit different than that. That's kind of a middle ground between that level two and level three.
Yes, sir.
Now, when you say spraying, are you talking localized spraying or are you talking aerial?
No, sir. This is all, this is all local ground spraying.
Okay, that's good. I'm okay with it.
In neighborhoods. Not in the woods, but in neighborhoods.
In the neighborhoods, that's correct.
Past people's streets, the city's, and the locations.
That's a different, that's a different chemical though than what was everywhere sprayed. It's not duet. It's not duet.
But it can be duet. Some of the...
Well, most of, if I may, Mr. King, most of your chemicals are going to have a pyretha in them. And most of those chemicals, from my understanding, with talking with the leading experts in CDC, have been out here 40 to 60 years. And there's a very limited amount of the chemicals that they use.
Right.
The difference between the aerial spraying with, I guess, crop dusting and... No, the difference, in my understanding, from the chemi, I think one of the concerns, I know of the calls that I got from citizens, was with the aerial spraying is that that is going to be in large amounts, similar to crop dusting. And typically with ground and aerial spraying, it's droplets. Droplets, very, very minor.
So you're saying they're similar, they're not different like that?
They're, you get large amounts when you're crop dusting, and droplets, and the ground and the aerial is similar. Yes, sir.
What they did was like crop dusting?
No, sir, it was not.
So the crop dusting is a separate...
That is a separate thing. But that was a comparison of what they've used as an example to help ease some of the minds of our consumers.
Are you saying it's the same chemical?
Well, I do know that one of our sister cities uses duet, which is what was used for the aerial spraying, for ground spraying also.
Okay.
So it can be.
But that hasn't been out around for 40, 50 years.
No, I don't know how long the duet has been there.
About eight years ago, but that's, I was just making sure. It's just the chemical composition.
Absolutely.
That's makes it totally different.
Six or seven of them, they're similar. They're different, but they have similar characteristics.
Milk is milk. Until you have chocolate or strawberry, it's still different.
They're different animals, but they have good taste. By the way, the other difference in the ground spraying is they're only going to be ground spraying in a localized area. And I've been ground spraying the entire city from top to bottom, just to get those. So just ground spraying, you think you've got those options.
Yes, sir. And targeted areas. Yes, sir. The role of our, I see, what is the county role in our plan? Our county was very supportive in, A, they were confirming all of our cases. You know, if someone calls me up and says, Sherry, I'm pretty sure I have West Nile virus, I cannot accept that as a confirmed case. That case actually has to come to our epidemiologist with Denton County. And so we work very closely with them during this season. We also attended several seminars for updates. So their role is pretty much a supportive role in arranging seminars and making sure that the information that we're receiving is accurate.
If doctors, if your family physician was to detect West Nile, are they required to report that?
They are, but what they should do is report that to the county epidemiologist.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What is a mosquito district and how does it work? A mosquito district, that is a separate local government that delivers a limited number of public services to a geographically limited area. I know there was concerns, and there's a long list out there of individual cities that say they are a mosquito district. But there's actually a definition for what a district is. They obviously have four distinguishing characteristics, which is that they are, like I said, a form of government, and they have governing boards, they provide services and facilities, and they have defined boundaries. And they typically also provide for a revenue source by your outward tax, you know, like that level of tax cannot exceed 25 cents on $100 of, you know, the taxable value of the property by the district to finance the program provided by the chapter. So there is some real definition, in other words, of you're saying that you are a mosquito district. And most of the ones that, at least the ones that I interviewed, because I had been asked to at least check some of the list, and I chose to do that with some of the ones that were here within the state of Texas. And for a fact that I know that Houston has been existence for a very long time and have a very good program in place. They do consider themselves a district, but however under the definition, they don't meet the requirements in which we just talked about. Ferris County, I had an opportunity to speak with Dr. Rubin there and Dr. Dunnett. Their program consists of year-round surveillance. That's different from what we do here. It's not the city of Lewisville and most of our surrounding cities. Dallas County does, or will begin this year. I spoke with Dr. Solis, and they'll be doing it year-round. But they do testing not only of mosquitoes. One of the interesting things, and I do like the idea that they test birds. State would do, used to do that for several years ago. They no longer provide that service. I'm certainly hoping it's something they will reconsider because according to the leaders, your CDC believes it's a strong part of your surveillance is not only being able to test the mosquitoes, but test the birds to find out what type of arbor virus you have present. They have their own site labs, so they've got their testing done there on site. They have a separate routine operational. They do nothing to spray. These people are the ones, if I remember correctly, I think they have about 16 trucks that are ready to react as soon as they need to. And then their funding, of course, is done through the county's general fund. I will back up because I know there were some questions about aerial spraying. One of the questions I wanted to know is this, because they are near wetlands or moist lands, how often they aerial spray? Some of the wording that I had gotten is that they actually do that quite a lot. But in speaking with Dr. Dunnett, that's not a true statement. In fact, he felt that their ground spraying was a lot more successful. Not that the aerial isn't, but he says that their program of ground spraying is very successful and that they've had great numbers with it, great reduction in their numbers.
Sherry, back to the testing birds. I heard to say that their Department of Health is not going to be testing birds for municipalities in the coming season?
Not unless they change their mind here in the next week.
As of today, at least.
As of today.
There would be no reason for citizens to collect and submit a bird to you or anybody else.
That's correct. That's correct. Mosquito district in Texas, research I selected or elected to also check with the city of Wichita Falls. They consider themselves a district. If you look at the list of those cities that consider themselves a district, that they also don't meet the definition of what a district truly is. Their program is similar to what the city of Lewisville's program is. They do their surveillance and trapping, mapping. They send their samples, their mosquitoes, to Austin for clarification. They do routine ground spraying when it's necessary. They're budgeted not only by the city, but also by the county. And their program within the city has been established since the 60s. So it's very similar to what we do. Questions?
You made a comment that the traps were put out there because it stimulates what they look for?
There's two types of traps. One is the light trap, and it typically is used with one of the things is the CO2. We haven't used that one as much as we typically do. It mimics what the body gives off. It's been very...
That's what attracts the mosquitoes.
It does attract. Its purpose is to attract a very wide range of mosquitoes. Whereas the rabbit trap, we set that trap up with smelly, stinky water, which replicates or mimics what you find in old creeks and ponds, becomes stagnant. That's what your quink, brown house mosquito likes. We're typically targeting that mosquito, and they're very attracted to that. So the rabbit trap is what we use. And most of your surrounding cities. However, you will get a combination of the two.
Okay. I was just, I wanted to, it doesn't answer the perfect thing.
Sherry, you gave us examples and then said they work, you know, mosquito districts. I kept waiting for the ones that, you know, some samples that work. So who is?
Well, most, I've talked to at least three on there. I don't have the other one. They were all pretty much the same. I did not get a chance. I know you sent me some information on, I think it was Sacramento, was it Sacramento, California? I've not called that one. I could certainly call that one. I can just tell you that the ones that we, and on the list they say mosquito district, but when you read that definition, they just didn't qualify for that.
So a lot of people call them so, but they really...
That was my experience in doing some of the research, yes. That was my experience in doing some of the research, yes.
Are there any actual mosquito districts in Texas? Because that definition is related to Texas.
State law.
Yes, yes, I, I'd, I'd have to do other calling on that, we don't know.
We could find, you know, that actually put a tax, a dollar around Texas.
Okay.
There are a bunch, Fort Man, Montgomery, Harris, because that's fine, they're, they're, they go right along with the municipal utility districts, flood districts, so they're there. But they're not always listed on there.
That's the one. Yeah, but Harris one isn't technically a district.
Harris County.
They call it something.
Harris County, I said, other ones in Harris County. And Harris County probably has a department, but it's probably just funded through their regular tax.
It is, yes.
And that's, there's a bunch listed on this list that, uh, they say they're not currently funded, they're organized but not funded.
Sherry, you might share what you found on the research of, of district-county status?
Yeah, we, I'd like to share a little bit, we did find a couple, um, that are considered districts. Um, their original funding was through an, an animal or a tax, they're all set up through the county and by state law, they have to be in county. We can't do it as a city, I think Louis checked to see if there was anything related to a city and there wasn't any state laws related to a city forming a district. The ones that we talked to were all along the coast and all, you know, very familiar with mosquitoes and wetlands and we're just now starting to see them come to areas other than the coastlines and the wetlands and things like that.
Premature to expect them in our area, but it could change.
But again, we didn't find any that were currently being funded through their own animal or a tax and were just singly separately funded as a district, they were all part of a county and allocated funding.
There are two, Wichita Falls and, uh, Hale County.
Wichita Falls is...
It's part of the city.
But they, they're listed as an organized district. But Hale County doesn't make that claim.
The key difference is, is probably among, taxation is one, it's the funding. Yeah, funding stream is, is the key difference, the other key difference is the separate, uh, governance. You have a separate board of directors or board of governors, it's not managed by the county commissioner or the city council or anything like that, it's made by a separate body. So, council, two things on this, uh, from staff's perspective, want to make you aware of this. Number one, uh, we'll be doing ground spraying if we wind up with those vectors that meet the conditions that Sherry described. We won't be requesting any kind of authority from council to do so. We'll be utilizing consultants and the sprayers that we utilized in the past, uh, for that service. Uh, the second thing is whether or not you're interested in pre-authorizing any kind of aerial spraying should the subject come up from the county at some point during the season. Or whether you rather just handle that as it comes up, schedule a council meeting, debate it and decide whether or not you want to do the aerial spraying. And if you recall, last summer, the county was on a rush, rush, rush basis where they had lined up the sprayers and you had to decide by, you know, a day or two. We wound up scheduling, you know, a quick meeting, it's having to coincide with the timeframe, but it might not coincide with the timeframe, which means we would actually get an emergency meeting, which can be done, I'll say it can be done. But, um, if you want to streamline that process or short-circuit it, you could probably pre-authorize staff to respond to a county request one way or the other, uh, or not. You can handle it the same way we handled it last year, so it's just a thought before that. I, I didn't like their entry, I'm not for streamlined. We've streamlined it to say no, to, we've streamlined it to say yes.
I don't mind having a, uh, you know, emergency meeting if we need to or put it on agenda. But, you know, at the time we had voted on it, it was like sixty-six people had the virus and there was complications with their kidney disease or whatever that they had, you know. I feel bad for that, you know, that they died and they also had West Nile virus. But, you know, you also have the same thing, thirty-six thousand people died from complications of the flu along with their kidney disease or, or whatever. Um, to me, on a personal level, I just didn't warrant, see it warrant the spraying of the way duet works on mosquitoes basically in neurotoxin to, uh, to do the spraying, I mean, it's...
On the thirty-six thousand?
That's from the CDC.
I, I'm not disputing the number, what could the city of Louisville have about those thirty-six thousand? Any action that we could have taken?
Nothing, I don't know there's...
There is an action we've taken, taken on the West Nile.
And I don't think there was, I don't think it helped for that.
We can give, we can give up free blue, blue shots.
Yeah.
We could give out free blue shots.
But we're not stopping it from happening with the West Nile.
The county does that, all right.
And county does that.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't know if the...
So, you're saying that the experts don't know what they're talking about?
I don't think they, I don't think they have enough proof that, you look, it controls mosquitoes, I agree, it kills a lot of things. It killed a lot of things, yes, it did, but are we, in the long term, from our history and from all the other spraying we've done with other chemicals, are we now making mosquitoes impervious to that duet spray? Or the ones that have...
So, the solution is to not do anything?
No, 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 I'm saying there's a lot of other things you can do besides spraying a, a chemical all over everything. I mean, we can continue, uh, treating the areas that are susceptible to mosquitoes.
With the same spray that you don't want to do?
No, that's a different spray, that's a spray we've been using for sixty years, duet's been out for like eight. It's a different chemical, it affects...
So, you'd be okay with this spray?
It affects the, uh, mosquito at the neuron level in the brain. The other stuff basically suffocates them on the outside, okay, forget the, the, how the chemicals are done. The point what I'm trying to say is there's a lot of other things we can do, we can, you know, educate the four, what do you call them, Ds? Okay, the four Ds, uh...
The four Ds?
Yeah, you know, we can get that out there, you know, there's a lot of standing water that people have to...
Right, dress.
They can fill in with some dirt or something to keep it from happening.
Okay, so, you're upset with the duet, not with what the thing's been used for fifty or sixty years?
I don't like that, the fact that they sprayed it all over us, you know.
So, if the thing that's been used for sixty years, would you be okay with the spraying all of it?
I don't like the spraying of the sixty years, the stuff for sixty years. There are ways to control things that don't affect the whole human population, all right? Look, we're going to find out in fifteen, twenty years, I may be wrong, I may be right, I don't know what even the solution is, but what's going to happen, is there going to be a buildup of that chemical in the water supply or something? Yeah, either way, but we know that other chemicals have, and we need to learn from those lessons not to do the things that we're doing now. That's all.
I'm going to short, I'm going to short-circuit this, I regret to see the council always have that decision power.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm not ready to give the city manager the authority.
Right, I agree with, I agree with that.
Were we talking about the city manager doing?
I agree with that.
That's what the, that was the question.
I think this is a pretty dynamic situation and I think there'll be changes in procedures, maybe even in chemicals. And I think there'll be time for us to react now without giving the city manager a standing authority to just go ahead and spray.
Any action we take, we can always take it back. I, I don't know where y'all are getting it, the city manager would have ultimate authority to do it.
Is asking for streamlining it.
Yeah, that we would say, "You have the authority to do this, you can't do outside of this."
But that's the you want to do.
He can't do outside of it. So, and all we have to do is change that, we can have an emergency meeting to change that.
I just don't want the default D where we don't have to have an emergency meeting if we have to.
To make a decision that we've already made.
Once before.
No, we can make a decision now that will be, will go into the future.
And that is we keep the power of that spraying decision at the council level.
Okay, so, the council's going to be flying the planes?
No. Either the city manager...
So, if we say, if we say that, that we're going to do, when the, when the, uh, county deal, county, whatever it is, makes a decision that it needs to be sprayed, that we're authorizing whoever, the city manager, anybody else to go ahead and move forward with that, that's what we do in an emergency. I think, let's just give him the direction now to what we decide to do. If he already says you can always change that, if you decide to change that, or you can do it either way. We'll decide that here in a little bit, we'll decide that here.
Sherry?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, I would like to, um, there were cities that did not, that voted no on the spraying, aerial spraying?
Yes, sir, I know that the city of Denton elected not to on the aerial.
I would like to know the different, I know it killed mosquitoes because there's, there was evidence it killed a lot of things. But I would like to know the difference on the impact on the West Nile virus compared from the cities that were sprayed and the cities that were not sprayed. I believe that, uh, Councilman Ferguson, you know, wrote up, had some great points the last time we talked about this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, when the, who's the guy that was there?
Uh, he was the county...
Dr. Bean Burton, Dr. Bean Burton.
Yeah, he had some great questions, uh, about that, uh, you know, I, I would like to see the actual statistics from non-sprayed areas and sprayed areas, collection before and after.
We asked for that, it does not exist.
I know it doesn't exist, but if we're going to move forward...
So, why are we asking for it?
Well, it could, it didn't exist in the past, but it can exist in the future if we test in those areas and get the information.
I could certainly check with Dr. Bean Burton to see if there's been any updates.
Check to see if there's any updates, but you can't, I mean, you can ask him to do something, whether they'll do it.
The, the thing is, they didn't test in the past for those areas, like what we're asking. I'm sure that if they're going to test, we need to collect the data at that time and compare. I, I just, I mean, if it was definite proof that, hey, duets that cure all and it got rid of all the West Nile virus, okay. But I, I think it's going to be like all the other chemicals out there and didn't do much.
I'm going to keep this one, council.
I, I was embarrassed for Dr. Bean, the, the data that he brought to us, for Dr. Burton. It was embarrassing and I, I hope he never, I hope he didn't put that data together because it was, it was embarrassing data. And, and we shouldn't have to make decisions based on that, that's original information.
Part of the problem is that data collection at county levels really only focused on the disease cases. They don't do, to my knowledge, they don't do any widespread testing pre, post on mosquito populations.
And if the state wants to continue to just airdrop a quarter million dollars, I mean, because that's literally what they're doing. It's they're airdropping a quarter million dollars of duet in, in, and there's no...
A quarter million dollars?
Well, I'm sure it was more than that.
Literally, they should just...
They should, they should, and we could go out and we could buy Ds.
Because the citizens out there catching a few mosquito.
Okay, we got along with the best, we're going to move on. One thing I'd like to know is, uh, are we going to offer, I know last year, I think we offered, uh, those little tablet things?
Mosquitoes, yes, sir, that is my, my...
But you were going, you're going to replenish your stock and a lot of that.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure that. Because I, I, I bought mine like in one of those stores, local stores, and what, and broke them up and dropped them into my drains for my pool, swimming pool, those drains are your yards, it's a safe place, stuff. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Sherry.
All right.